Yeah, I mean the last one was.
What's that?
The last time I played was eh.
It's changed a lot. So it's sea trails.
Yeah, you said that. I haven't played that one in a while because it stunk. The last time I played was terrible, so.
I I refuse to play it for years.
Yeah, I mean, the last. Last place I played. This year was I played Carolina National.
Yeah, I played that last week.
It was okay. I mean, it was okay. I mean, it was better than it had been, but wasn't. Great.
Dave going to be here?
No, he's got he's. He said he'll be on Zoom call.
Okay.
I'm fine. How are you?
Uh, Sarah's got.
Good morning. This is the November seventh, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Brunswick County Board of Elections for provisional and absentee ballot considerations. We all rise, please, and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic from which this stands, one nation under.
Okay. Everybody has a copy of the agenda? We have any changes, additions, deletions? Hearing none, made a motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Consideration and tabulation of absentee ballots. Madam Chair, madam, I keep trying to promote you, which is appropriate, madam director.
Okay, um, so for your consideration at this meeting, we are going to start with one ballot. This ballot was received timely on Election Day. It was sent to us by email. We received it in our inbox at seven twelve, but at that point in the evening, staff was all over the place. And we did not see it until after the board adjourned on Election Night and left.
Okay.
So we did confirm with the state that because it was received timely, even though we were supposed to count all absentee ballots on Election Day, there's still something flying around in here. Um. Um, we are permitted to still count this because it was received timely, so I'm going to let Adrian present that one ballot to you.
Okay. Um. It's my understanding that the timelines for what timely receipt have changed this year. Could you just re- refresh our memory?
So all absentee ballots have to be received at the Board of Elections office by seven thirty P M. There is no longer a postmark grace period, you know, if it's postmarked Election Day and we receive it a few days later. What is new this year that all timely received ballots by seven thirty have to be counted Election Night and included in those results?
Okay.
Um, there is the possibility that a ballot can be cured. So say, for instance, a voter didn't sign their envelope. We let them know and give them the opportunity to sign something attesting that they voted that ballot. That deadline is at noon today. So we may have other ballots to consider if those voters cure by noon today.
Okay.
Um, there is also the possibility that a military or overseas ballot that is mailed to us is received by next Thursday, and that can be considered and added in at the Canvas meeting if it meets all the criteria to be accepted.
So if if the U S Postal Service was to deliver a ballot on Wednesday morning regardless of when it was physically mailed, that could not be considered.
That is correct. That is correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have one overseas ballot that was returned electronically. Adrian will present that for you to review. And it was received electronically, so if it's approved, it will be duplicated by the team during the meeting.
Little music going on there?
I don't know what that was.
Like a little drum beat. Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the electronically filed ballot.
We have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I get one of each of you? Thank you. Do we need to start with opening anything? Opening there? Okay.
Yes. You can go ahead and open. So we're starting with a zero count on the Verity system today because everything we previously considered for absentee was tabulated and closed out Election Night. So we'll have a zero report for you to sign here momentarily.
Okay.
And Butch, I'll just hold on to that in my folder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that made me smile.
And we have scanned in and written one ballot.
And we approved one ballot, so we match.
Yes.
Um, but at this point, we will not be closing that out. As a reminder, you'll just hold it until noon and we'll see if we get a cure for either of the two ballots by noon.
Right. Thank you.
All right. So at this point, we're ready to move into the consideration of provisional ballots.
Proceed. Thank you.
All right. Do you have a lapel mic, Melissa? Do you need one since you will be moving around? Um, that way she doesn't have to just stand at the podium. She can move. We'll make sure she's mic'd up so everybody can hear. Um, so in your packets, you do have a summary of the provisional ballots that were considered. There were one hundred and forty nine provisional ballots cast. And then I will just remind you that the procedure for considering all provisional ballots today is also new. Traditionally, we had until Canvas Day, which is next Friday, to present, research, count all provisional ballots, and now that process has to be finished today. So we will consider all provisional ballots cast in this election, and they will be added to the totals and released to the public today.
People, please vote in your proper precincts. Thank you.
I think we did really good with that this time. I have to say the number of out of precinct provisional ballots was down significantly, and I think that has to do with some messaging that we had our poll workers share with voters, which was, if they showed up in the wrong precinct, if you would like your vote to be counted today, you should go to your home precinct. You can stay here and cast a provisional ballot, but that vote will not be included in the results released tonight. And I think I think most people want to see their votes in the Election Night results, so I think that helped.
Always a challenge.
Yes.
The the state released the other day, and I'm sure you've seen it. A list of provisional ballots by county, and we were number fourteen or fifteen, if my math is correct, which more or less corresponds to the number of registered voters that we have in the county. Obviously, Mecklenburg and Wake had more than we did, so. I think, you know, whatever we're doing, we just keep doing it and add add to it in the future as you see fit. I'm sure, you know.
And just to follow up with that, one other thing. Not especially with municipal elections, not every municipality has an election. So don't be surprised if you go somewhere and they don't have a ballot for you because it does happen. And people don't seem to understand why it's Election Day, they should have to vote.
Yes, there's a lot of that. Yeah. All right. So Melissa, I will let you present your provisional research findings to the board.
Okay, we had a hu- a total of one hundred and forty nine provisional ballots between early voting and Election Day. Um, so normally, the way I normally present these to you is I normally group them, and I gave I go through this summary sheet with you, and we normally stop at the categories, and if you feel it's appropriate to make a group motion, um, you can at that time when we get through each category. I I prefer to get through all the categories and then start opening the ones you've approved if that is agreeable to the board. Okay, so the first grouping I have for you are recommended for approval, a total of seventy four ballots recommended for full approval. Um, they are broken down in categories for you. Um, the first category was an I D not provided, but the voter did properly execute a no photo I D exception form. So there's thirteen of those. Uh, there is one ballot that the same day registrate- same day registrant at early voting did not present proof of residency at the time they did their same day registration. They have cured that, so they brought that to the office in a timely manner. So that is recommended for approval. We have three that had an administrative or a poll worker error that are recommended for approval. Two of those, the poll worker error on Election Day, the poll worker just should have updated the address and and given the voter a regular ballot. Instead, they updated the address and had them vote provisional. So they are the full correct ballot. The ballot, the voter receives a correct ballot style. Um, the other one listed under poll worker error category is I reached out to the state. The voter was initially denied. Their registration was initially denied. What that means is when a first time registrant in Brunswick County, part of the verification process is we mail a voter registration card. If that comes back to us returned undeliverable, that voter is denied, their registration is denied because part of our verification process is delivering mail successfully to them at the address they use on their registration. In the research process, we put their address in the system incorrectly. Um, so this in looking at what they submitted versus what we originally entered, there was some a miskey. And so it did not, their verification card originally did not go to the correct address. It was returned because we made an error. So their provisional is recommended to be counted. Um, we had twenty one incorrect precinct, which, as Sarah mentioned, is a very low number for us. We're very grateful that that number is lower. And as Sarah talked about, that we did introduce some new wording at the help desk, and we feel like that helped encourage voters to go to their correct precinct on Election Day. Some of those are also poll workers that were working at a precinct other than their home precinct on Election Day, so they had no choice but to vote out of precinct on Election Day. We had one voter that was previously removed from the system uh, by list maintenance, and the law says if they did not register elsewhere in the time they were removed in North Carolina, and they attest that they never voted anywhere else in the state, and they remained in Brunswick County, they they can't, their vote can be counted and their registration reactivated. Um, we had one that was an unreported move. Um, their address was corrected at the time they voted, but they did have to vote provisional because when they corrected their address, they were then out of precinct. We did have thirty four provisional voters that were under the Registration Repair Project where their registration currently has no identification information, either their driver's license or state I D number or the last four of their social. Um, as Sarah has provided information to you before, the Registration Repair Project now requires that any of those voters, um, the next time they present to vote, they vote by provisional ballot and are required to provide one of those numbers. Um, thirty three of those provided those numbers, and they were able to be validated. We had one, the thirty fourth one, that provided a number, and it did not validate. The instructions in the numbered memo say even if the number does not validate, if the voter presented a Hava I D, another form of acceptable I D in person, um, their vote is eligible to be counted. That voter, however, will remain on the Registration Repair Project list, and will have to vote provisional again until we get a number to validate. But their provisional today is eligible to be counted. So that brings the total to seventy four recommended to be approved, fully approved.
So want a motion separate?
Unless you have any questions about any of those categories or specific voters.
Section. That road.
I assume the one that moved moved within Brunswick County?
Yes, they showed up at their old precinct. They reported a move that would have put them in another precinct, and they didn't want to go to that other precinct. So it's categorized as an unreported move.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm making motion to approve the seventy four provisional ballots as recommended by staff.
So we have a motion, any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. So our next category is partials. We have four voters that voted out of precinct and therefore did not get their correct ballot style. Those four voters, they are not eligible to vote on all of the contests on the ballot they received. They're only eligible to vote on part of the of the ballot they received. So those are recommended to be partially approved. Those will be duplicated by the bipartisan team onto the correct ballot style, and the office they voted on that they are not eligible obviously will not be on the duplicated style.
Were these the ones that they were not eligible for? Were those candidates for office? Or were they the special elections districts? Do we know? And it's not a critical question, so.
Okay. Um, I I can look at them if you like.
No, I don't. It's not critical.
I believe off the top of my head, they received ballots that were Leland and H to go, and they were only eligible for H to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Any question, any other questions about the partials?
Do we have to duplicate them first, or do we just?
You have to approve them, and then we'll.
All right, so I make a motion to partially approve the ballot, fully approve the partial ballots to be duplicated.
We have a motion for partial approval. Any discussion?
Partial.
Approval of partial.
Partially approved.
As recommended by staff. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Um, the next category are those we are recommending for disapproval or for you not to approve. There are sixty three in total. Thirty six, we found no record of registration. So when we when a voter comes to a precinct and the poll worker cannot find them in the system, we are offering a gentle reminder that the law requires in order for you to vote on Election Day, you had to have been registered by October tenth. Do you believe you were registered by that deadline? If the voter indicates they want to vote, or they do believe they were registered prior to that deadline, they were, they are offered a provisional ballot. Uh, during our research process, we look at all of our information. Did they attempt with our office to register in a timely manner? Um, we also look at the state duplicate report. Are they registered in another county in North Carolina? We also look at a report from the Department of Motor Vehicles. Did they make an attempt to register at the Department of Motor Vehicles or through their website? Um, so those are the facets that we check when we're looking for a voter that is not found in the system. Um, so we have thirty six of those where we found no record of registration. Three of those voters were previously removed, and there was no category that would allow their their vote to be counted. One voter is an incorrect precinct voter that should be disapproved because they were not eligible for any contest on the ballot they received. So they went to the incorrect precinct, the poll worker reminded them they were at the incorrect precinct, and the ballot they received did not have any contest they were eligible to vote on. And then we have twenty three, which is categorized as a jurisdictional dispute. And those are in a municipal election. All of these were voters that believed they lived within one of the jurisdictions that was having an election. So they were categorized in our system as no ballot, meaning they were not in a municipality, they were not in one of the special districts. They appeared to vote and wanted to vote anyway. Um, those are researched by us, those are researched by Butch specifically. He verifies not only in the GeoCode system, he actually will pull up the maps and look at their their address on the maps to verify whether or not they are in a district. So he did that research for us, and there are twenty three that are not and need disapproval.
I have a question about those previously removed again. Now can they they can they self cure by just showing them their showing the I D? I mean, I don't understand how they, if they were previously removed. Like, because you put them in an approved one, and then you didn't put them in this one, and I'm just a little confused about it.
Um, one was previously removed by list maintenance. However, he is an active registrant in Wake County, so.
Oh, okay, there you go.
Um, we have one that was previously denied. So when a voter registers to vote, and they're, as I mentioned with the other one, their verification card gets returned to us undeliverable.
Same thing.
Their registration is denied.
Okay, cool.
Um, and then we have one that was removed from our system because we got notice that they moved, and they are an inactive registrant in Gaston County.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Yes.
I noticed there was one particular voter that apparently voted twice. And then.
I ha- I can give you an explanation of what happened on that one. Um, there is one voter that cast two provisional ballots. Um, the first provisional ballot, after they had completed the process, the poll worker discovered that they entered the voter's address incorrectly into the provisional balloting system, so they did not get the correct ballot style. So the voter then processed a second provisional ballot for them with the correct ballot style according to their address. However, that voter is not registered, and no record of registration was found for that voter. So you are disapproving both of them.
Okay, all right, good.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to not approve the sixty three ballots as recommended by staff.
We have a motion, any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Melissa, I have one quick question before we proceed.
Yes.
The folks who and I'm not sure exactly where jurisdictional dispute, not, I guess. I know in the community that I live in, we have a lot of new folks who are unfamiliar with unincorporated county and municipal voting. In your your work, did we see a lot of that? Folks that might have been in unincorporated county thought they were in a municipality? Is that? Okay.
That's what those are. They fall under that category. We didn't see as many as I had expected to see.
All right.
Um, again, we did provide a little more script guidance for our help desk on providing information to voters on what exactly a no ballot means and what jurisdiction means. So I believe that some of our increased training with our help desk on those topics has reduced some of the numbers of provisional this time.
Yeah. I I would hope that we could keep in mind that we have a lot of new folks moving into the county who from states where unincorporated county is not an issue. Um, I know it took me a couple of years to figure that out myself. And so in as we go forward and we put out public information in campaigns, you know, maybe that's just one of the one of the little points that we need to emphasize. So I think we've done a good job so far. We just have to keep it up. Thank you.
We have two that are pending your review and can be reviewed before noon. Um, one of them was presented to us, the help desk accidentally sealed the provisional voting application. It's sealed inside with the ballot. So we did as much research as we could do because we can see what they entered into the computer to create the provisional ballot voting application, but I do need your permission to open the ballot envelope to review the provisional voting application.
And then you're gonna look it up right now, see if they're eligible.
Yes.
So we have to make a motion to open the ballot like we have when Christie presents.
Yes.
So.
I need your permission to open it.
I make that motion.
All in favor? Aye? All in favor? Aye?
Sarah's gonna look at that one to see if it aligns with the preemptive research I did on it based on what was entered into the computer. The other pending one I'd like you to review on is where the voter did not sign the provisional voting application. A provisional voting application is normally signed by the voter right here. This is a photo ID exception form. The voter did, did properly execute a photo ID exception form.
They signed that.
So they signed the photo ID exception form but did not sign the provisional voting application. In guidance from, from the state, although ideally we would want the voter to cure this and come sign it, in guidance from the state, it basically, I'm paraphrasing this, you cannot hold a poll worker error as a reason for not counting a ballot for a registered voter. This has previously, in previous elections, we have viewed this as a poll worker error because the help desk is supposed to ensure that the voter signs the provisional voting application.
Now is the rest of the application is correct?
Yes, got the correct ballot style. The reason they voted provisional is because they did not have a photo ID. They properly executed a photo ID exception form and that form is signed.
Okay.
I guess my, when I read your report, my initial thought was to disapprove that when I, it's like a blank check. And your signature is important. You have to put that signature on the check. And what you're saying here is that the application had no signature. So is that, does that make the application valid and invalid? That's my question.
That is at your discretion because if it is viewed as a poll worker error, that the poll worker did not ensure the voter signed the form, guidance from the state has been that you should not disapprove a ballot solely because a poll worker made an error.
Is that what the law says?
Let me get you the.
I don't think the law gets into that kind of minutia.
It's in a numbered memo. Bet you're gonna find it before I will. Let's race. Let me grab an email.
Prove that.
Okay, I I I'll tell you, I'm I'm inclined to approve it all. So I I was thinking the application was to to register. Okay, and I was thinking that they had not previously been registered, so, sorry, I'm with you now.
Oh, no, I'm just trying to find out about the other ballot. Did you check it?
First one.
Oh, it's good.
Okay.
Yeah, the 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 number, the identification number that that voter provided did validate.
Okay, then I make a motion to approve the two ballots that were presented by staff.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa.
Up to you. It's whatever flow works. It's really, I mean, they're all going to get opened.
Two.
Yeah. What do you think, duplicate first?
Um, we give it, it's there. Already did that one?
The one where the voter didn't sign?
We didn't see that.
I don't think that got passed up.
I think you showed us.
Yeah, you showed it.
You showed it to us, but we don't have it.
It's written there somewhere.
Not touch it. On the podium?
Is it on the podium? Under your binder, maybe? No? Yeah, underneath my laptop. Oh, there you go. That I wasn't expecting to bring over here. So we'll duplicate the fully approved first. Sounds good. So I need a duplication overseers.
Hey, Sarah.
Yes.
Dave is on the Zoom call, by the way, but he said he's, he'll can't hear him, which I think is normal.
Yeah, so he is on the Zoom call and he can listen to us and he can be on the Zoom for those watching Zoom, but we did not have enough time to put together any kind of capability for him to participate.
I'm I'm waving when I when we vote.
Correct ballot style, what's going on, and you to open that.
It's a good thing you can't hear me.
So Christie, when you open that, you're going to verify it says EROB and the voters voting present, home present. No, you don't. I already wrote it on there.
I don't either.
What do you think? Oh, what I really wanted to say is everything we've published has had that blurb.
Yeah.
You can't make people read it. That's interesting, I think. Yeah. Butch, have you opened the, have you guys opened the Verity? Noel, you can go ahead and open the Verity and print the zero report for the provisionals. Butch, have you opened the, have you guys opened the Verity? Noel, you can go ahead and open the Verity and print the zero report for the provisionals. Butch, you don't have to. I can just have him pass it down when he gets back up there. Oh, got it.
I appreciate it.
Me, yeah, I guess Mac, Mac is number two. There. Which one, how is Mac? Oh, there's Mac on top. Butts. Yeah. Big sign, but. I don't want to deal about the issue. He's worked. In the same town as St. James, yeah. The precinct, yeah. Post office. Two thousand homes have built out. I think we're a little over, am, so we've got a couple of them. Two thousand, twenty-three, twenty-four. Not not as big as you guys. Used to hit a seven, nine.
But the super senior teams.
If you still rather the fairway, having fifty hours out. Six or seven, nine. And six or five. Yeah, I got, yeah, stick, yeah. Well, that's some, some chairs. Since within the last eighteen months, it seems like my distance has grown. Amazing.
No, you wore green today. Greens, you wore green. It's like a tradition. We wear green for absentee meetings.
Really?
Well, I'm going to give you credit for it. Well, I think it's a staff thing. Yeah, we've been doing it for years.
Close the box, do everything that's green.
Ah. Again, Butch, for now, we're not closing that yet because there are some that have a cure deadline of noon. Well, once we get to a stopping point, you guys can reset if you wanted to.
Hmm?
You see the new appointments on the state board?
I don't know.
Okay, so our provisional count is eighty ballots.
Yep.
Eighty.
And we're matched it. All right, wonderful.
You had it. Butch. Your count again was?
Eighty.
It's eighty.
Okay.
Um. Well, we might want to seal the bin if we're going to recess, but. Butch, did you bring enough seals to seal the bin if we're going to recess and then we can open it up and put any additional ballots if necessary in there?
Um.
Um. Chair, I would like to let you know that at this point, we cannot close out and tabulate any of these results because we have a twelve P M. Deadline for cures.
Understood.
So, um, we can seal the ballot bin and turn off the computer, and then if, if it pleases the board, you're welcome to recess until noon.
Okay, um, just Melissa. I. We had eighty ballots, correct?
Yes.
Um. We had seventy-four approved. Four partials. And two.
That's what we voted on. Pending board decision.
Okay, that's, okay, I was, my math was off, I'm sorry. All right. I'll make a motion to.
Well, you want to get, have, put the seals on the.
We're gonna seal this up.
The board's gonna recess, I think it would be prudent to seal the bin.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're, we're putting everything in the bin, the drives and everything, and we're gonna seal them, and so when we come back in, even if we don't have anything to read, we're going to need to unseal that bin to get to the drives.
All right.
All right, so it's, our seal numbers are three, five, zero, five, seven, nine, eight, two. That's three, five, zero, five, seven, nine, eight, two. And three, five, zero, five, seven, nine, eight, three. Again, that's three, five, zero, five, seven, nine, eight, three.
Before we recess, I know we're not necessarily going to the public comment, but I know we have four folks in the audience. Um, were there any concerns that you folks had relative to what we've done today, or you have any questions? I'm sorry? Yes, ma'am.
So impressed and thankful for this, this group of people. They've worked with Mark, God. They're very friendly, helpful, and I don't think I've seen anything run better than this department.
Um. They ha, they have a good leader in our director over there, and, and I've been on the board for twelve years. And I am want to say that I think we have the best staff and best election staff in the state of North Carolina. Hands down. Anyway, yes, sir.
What Tom talked just said. I'm extremely impressed by all of the staff that helped organize and joined me, God, ran this meeting today. Well done.
Thank you, thank you for everything. All right, nothing else right now? We will recess until noon, I've got, uh, about twelve or thirteen minutes after eleven, so.
Okay.
Well done, thank you, we're in recess.
Thank you.
Okay. We're back.
Okay. It is 12 noon. We are back from recess. I guess the question is, have we received any?
We have not. So at this point, what we can do is confirm the seals are the same that we put on the bin when we recessed. And then we will tabulate the absentee and the provisional V-drives.
Okay, and that that will give us grand totals for everything?
Um, as of today, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have seal number three five zero five seven nine eight two.
Mm-hmm.
And three five zero five seven nine eight three.
That's correct.
Yay.
You guys get to start running your reports and all that. It'll just take a minute anyway, so.
Yes, we'll do the absentee one first.
Mm-hmm. Oh.
You got it right. Yep. 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 Provisional. It's slightly, yep. Yep. We can go ahead and shut that down. Absentee.
Yes.
Hit your tabulate. And. Yep.
Kristi and Julie. You're free. You can go, yeah, we don't have any more ballots to do anything with, so you two can head back over to the office if you'd like. Thank you.
Okay.
I did a job of falling in circles today.
Sir.
Yes.
The ballot that Kristi just had, what was that?
Those were the two pending cures in case the voter had cured the ballots.
And we did not get the?
We did not.
Okay.
No, so those are going to go back over to the office and live in the vault.
Mm-hmm.
For retention purposes, yes.
Twenty-two months still?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
About two years.
Mm-hmm.
The audit meeting on Wednesday, that's.
At the office, yes.
Sorry, just.
He said two. Here, six pending cures.
Oh, that's provisionals. Those were the two absentees that were pending cure. Yeah, the um, the provisionals are still in Melissa's provisional bins, yes. Sorry for the confusion.
That's okay.
That's okay. Just, uh. If anybody's watching us, just so we've, uh. Answered any questions on why we were carrying the ballots around. So.
Nope, because I haven't put sealed stuff on it yet.
You want absentee?
That's the provisional or the absentee poll book?
Yeah. Yeah, that's it. The poll book for the ballots.
For that round. There will be more, Paula.
I'm sitting here doing very important.
Thank you.
Awkward. Interesting. Yeah.
I got through one, you ready?
Hmm?
I learned how to, I learned how to write. In jury school, so I actually learn better than writing.
Oh, Lord.
Mister. Picture his face. Big guy, bald head.
Oh, you know what it is? Everybody coming to get the mail.
Mister.
Mister can't remember where it's. Shit. Only sixty-five years? Again, listen again. Actually, it's it's called Sherwood Forest.
Yeah, I was getting ready to say it's the British cavalry, isn't it?
Uh, it's Robin Hood. Why do you have to tell me twice?
Near the city. We have a dozen local radio stations.
Oh, wow.
And the big ones. They would have two, two, I don't, these two local stations, they would get in the hand. If they got their decal on, they would pull me over.
Oh, my gosh.
And then we give you votes.
Nice.
So, um, one day I heard local, I usually had these one class station on like relaxed the road. I had her full zero hundred. Right around. I have zero, so I pull one on, slap one on the seat. And they said that they were in my town, so I'm like driving around.
Where are they at? Yeah.
Sure enough, they saw me.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, it was really cool. So, like, thank you. What was it? My sister, they're like, oh, what are you doing? Driving around? I'm like, my sister was like, look at my man.
Oh, my gosh.
So, the thing was that the prize was that you got the key to try in a, in a brand new car.
No way.
Yeah, so I had a, the tarot show had two Z, little dots, and it was up. And the car, the way it was like I was, yeah, I was on it.
Yeah.
Maybe, um it was a three hundred, yes, so it was just like the same car I was driving, but a, you know, much more recent model.
Yeah.
So, you go down to, you have to drive to this Nissan dealer in and it's in New Jersey and then, you know.
Oh, my gosh, get your key and.
As soon as I hit the box.
Oh, really?
Because I had a Z, so I had a
You knew what kind of?
It was a two-sided key and then the one-sided key. So I knew it would fit in.
Yes.
It was just kind of like a cool, a cool thing.
Fun. So you put the sticker on your car?
Just so.
You just popped it on?
Yep, and then I got pulled, I happened to get
That is so funny.
It was pretty funny.
Love that.
It was just the, the, the odds of the happening.
Uh-huh. I like that.
This, I need the signature, this is a provisional results tape.
Oh, yeah, you can empty that whole folder out if you want to. What, what is that, but? Okay. You could see it, yeah. Yeah, 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 I don't think a white pre-candy van, and you'd be like, yes. I just, I really like that you just had the stickers in your car, so that whatever one you heard, you could be like.
Just those two though.
The odds, yeah.
And I think I just usually look like it's
Yes. Oh, my gosh.
It was pretty funny. Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Those are everything.
Uh, this is the stuff we do today.
Remember seeing radio station vans around? Like, I remember them instead of it, like yeah, stations that
That's provisions.
You do? What if you won?
Everett?
But if I get a double-sided key, I might have a better chance.
Did you do an absentee result tape?
We have one that did the
Well, one of them needs to be signed by the board, yeah. Thank you. I got my checklist, I'm just making sure we have all the things.
We love checklists.
You and me both.
Yes. Is that the report of provisional voters?
Prevents things from getting missed. This one's still hot off.
You get your certificates of votes?
It's still hot, literally, it's still hot off the front. There's no particular spot, so wherever you care to offer.
And this is?
Report of provisional voters. You're required to sign the first date.
Well.
Okay.
Wouldn't an overseas civilian, because the other alternative is a military's certificate?
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, it's Uokava. So what's your question?
It's slightly different from the one near Arundel.
No, because there's nothing to attach to it.
That's it.
So, no, I can tell you no. If they come back and say you do, then I'll, I'll jump on that grenade. But if there's nothing to attach to it, because it's attached to the list.
A single
I get it.
It depends on why they go to ask.
What's the worst-case scenario?
Have what as a thing?
We call them special snowflakes, if there are ones that maybe I have to put in help of to get
What?
It's just sometimes I do that.
You could have had a civilian today, is that what?
Shannon, I thought Phillips.
Yeah.
I saw that name.
Thank you.
It's just easy. Or not, like if they
This is the absentee and provisional results.
We're almost done. Okay.
But, you know, I could spend several of them, I could spend another one. I could spend an hour on one, especially if I need in the state. Now, we had this one, we had like a whole team working off our training for provisional ballots.
I was just, I was playing with numbers the other day. Trying to figure out how much it costs us to, to do that based upon, you know, cost of labor and benefits and overhead.
All day, Wednesday, researching all of these.
Certificate of oath for Uokava, sixty. Civilians and A.
We spent all day with
All the sick people.
Got it, and you did the absentee outside.
All the initial research done in one day. That was only a hundred and fifty dollars.
Everybody except me?
New Hanover had five hundred and fifty or something. They have to use more people.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if I answered what you asked.
You did, you did, you know.
Some question, I, I can stick here. Apparently, the sheriff's got a significant volunteer
Yeah, we're working out lots of people, yeah, the sheriff's department.
Thanks for your work. Well, the problem is, is anybody that has access to
Yeah. Following your leadership.
There you go. Oh, I thought you meant Paula. Thank you.
I have to use my good signature?
That, um, that's for the votes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This one, it can come back that way. I don't have the green one yet until they give me seal numbers. Okay, I'm ready. Oh. Okay. Okay. Think I got any more, right?
Yeah, I think the blower is on right now, by factor. That's why Ed's wearing a sweater, he's smart.
Mm-hmm.
I'm always cold, I guess.
This room is cold.
I get cold quicker than others, for that one.
It's gotta be really cold for me to be cold. Wait, I'm very hot natured.
At least you're not a hot head.
I can be. Getting better and older.
Eddie, kids. Kids, kids.
Kids, yeah, I know, I know. I heard him talking with old legs, I'm turned to say.
Hey, I call for AARP, so.
What, AARP?
Yep.
How old are you?
Fifty-seven.
You've got two kids over.
I'm not a teenager. Yeah, my son's out of college this year, thank goodness.
Oh, my God, you're old.
I am. Older than dirt.
I just wanted to make, I was, I was wondering if I could. Almost was, I was, I was a walking dead.
I can be real mean before, you know?
Your parents probably still high school.
I hardly angry, it was outside, without, you see it. That was, I really, yeah, I couldn't feel that they had been told.
So it's like, oh, who knows, that's so much you know. And the earth is all my life.
Your office.
Relative?
They're, they're a picture of ransom, it's a ransom's way, so I don't want it to be a picture. Can always take that. I'm the oldest, you know, and it's always a man, you may have been out to in church.
Yeah, we can talk about that, that's me.
Because he was older.
Like the falls.
It's a lot.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get those numbers.
Alrighty, so we got seal numbers three seven four seven one three two five. Three seven one, three seven four seven one three two five. And our other seal is three five zero five seven nine eight four. Again, that's three five zero five seven nine eight four.
That was when you threw that five in there instead of seven, I was like, you are lying. What is the right number? Because they've always been consecutive. It was like a trick. And I'll just confirm, we approved and scanned one absentee and eighty provisionals at this meeting. I had not filled that in because we were waiting on the noon cutoff, but it is eighty provisionals and one absentee.
Yes.
So I'll pass this down. So I'll pass this down. Butch, are we just waiting on it to post externally?
No, I'm waiting for it to post internal.
Okay, got it.
It's running slow for some reason. Yes, you're right. Um, Quinn.
One sixty.
Uh, Thomas. Um, Ryden's. Um, Herman. Fitzhugh. John Miller. Hannah. Right in. Fast.
One eighty one.
Uh, Moore.
Ninety.
Right in.
Zero.
Merrill.
Two fifteen.
Smith. Right in. Blanca.
Five eighty five.
Ellis.
Four seventy four.
Right in. Sherwood.
Five fifty.
Osborne.
Five nineteen.
Sirianni.
Five fourteen.
Meme.
Four zero two.
Uh, right in. Um, Cook.
Fourteen.
Right in.
Zero.
Smith.
Fourteen.
Hayes.
Thirteen.
Walters.
Twelve.
Harville. Right in. Bellamy.
Ninety seven.
Willhorn.
Ninety seven.
Strungus.
Ninety two.
Right in. Conti.
Like ninety two.
Uh, right in.
Twenty seven.
Watts. Alt.
Two seven.
Robinson.
Thirty.
Good enough. Right in.
Seventy five.
Um, background.
Good enough, seventy five.
Yes.
Right in's five.
Barry.
One seventeen.
Dollinger.
Eighty nine.
Silverstein. Harvis. Right in. Holden.
Three ninety four.
Family.
One seventy four.
Six.
Yeah.
Right in. All blurred. Okay, uh, Pate.
Three thirty eight.
Smith.
Three oh seven.
Hawk.
Two thirty six.
Surprise.
Two thirty five.
Right in. Um, Pendleton.
Thirty one forty nine.
Higher.
Twenty five ninety seven.
McHugh.
Twenty four.
Wally.
Seventeen sixteen.
Eric or Robbins.
Three seven three.
Yeah, right in.
Thirty seven.
Um, Terry.
One sixty eight.
Merrick.
One twenty six.
But Mouring.
Ninety eight.
Yeah, right in. Um, Willis.
Two nineteen.
Suggs.
One fifty.
Dixon.
One thirteen.
Hattens.
One hundred.
Burgess.
Seventy two.
Right in.
Nineteen.
Grady.
One eight six.
Knox.
Thirty five.
Right in.
Zero.
Edge.
Two hundred.
Right in.
Four.
Ranger Clemmons.
One ninety six.
Right in. Carroll.
One eighty five.
Uh, right in.
Six.
Brown.
Fifteen sixty two.
White.
Fourteen ninety five.
Um, Diaros.
Seventy seven.
Right in.
Five.
Bynum.
Thirteen ninety nine.
Brown.
Twelve ninety one.
Stevenson.
Eleven eighty.
McCullough.
Ten twenty six.
Frazier.
Seven sixty six.
Reese.
Three thirty three.
Uh, right in.
Nine.
Um, Smith.
Two fifty five.
Right in.
Forty six.
Robertson.
Two thirty.
Raul.
Two oh nine.
Bristay.
One sixty eight.
Right in.
Nineteen.
Miller.
Twenty six.
Right in. Dodger.
Twenty seven.
Lince.
Nineteen.
Right in.
Two.
Uh, Wilkins.
Twenty four.
Right in. Dorfeld.
Three thirty three.
Eckhart.
Two fifty one.
Right in. Bellamy.
Four oh one.
Vassil.
Three eighty five.
Right in.
Twenty eight.
Um, Haydom.
Twelve ten.
Alt.
Eight fifty two.
Right in.
Eight.
Moss Deller.
Nine eighty nine.
Carroll.
Nine twenty.
Crosby.
Nine eleven.
Miller.
Seven sixty.
Right in. Gross.
Eight sixty one.
Ray.
Seven and five.
Adams.
Three sixty eight.
Right in. Forward.
Ten seventy.
Excuse me, thank you.
Barclay.
Eight ninety three.
Lewis.
Good night.
Urban.
Five seventy eight.
Cadle.
Two eighty six.
Right in.
Twelve.
Phillips.
Thirteen twenty eight.
Peters. Right in. Forday.
Fourteen eighty nine.
Arnold. Brom.
Eight ninety nine.
Dicinger.
Six eighty six.
Burns.
Six seventy two.
Right in.
Thirty eight.
Bachelor.
Twelve sixty nine.
Hargreaves.
Six oh four.
Right in.
One.
Uh, Galloway Junior. Right in.
Zero.
Galloway.
Thirty seven.
Right now.
Twenty six.
Right in.
Two.
Clark.
Forty three seven one.
Right in. Askay.
Forty three sixteen.
Right, right in.
One oh one.
Jenkins.
Forty four fish.
Right in.
Eighty eight.
Wood.
Thirty six ninety one.
Uh, Howard.
Thirty seven.
Frank.
Twenty eight eighty six.
Boyd.
Twenty one.
Right in. Hurcom.
Three ninety one.
Uh, Lloyd.
Two eighty eight.
Jarvis. Right in.
Seven.
Monachelli.
Three thirty six.
Right in.
Five.
No.
Thirty two one.
Yes.
Two thirty.
Alright. We are spot on.
Who owns the father's restaurant? Where? You know, hardest.
Does your father?
No, you're kidding. No.
I love how tickled you get.
Brian, is there anybody online?
Those are some.
There is a few people.
Okay.
We're just waiting, patient.
Yep.
My microphone's off. What's that? News one? We built. Can't say I've ever been there. Which I've been to great. Which is the one that's close to High Point.
Me as well.
If anyone's wondering, we're just waiting on the public website to update now.
Well, I mean, truly, you've uploaded.
Yes, we're, we're.
The board portion of this is finished.
Okay.
Um, we have imported it to the internal website, and then now we're just waiting it, for it to appear on the public website. But you all have approved and signed, and we've got everything sealed, so the board meeting portion can be finished.
Well, I just want to make, for anybody that's online, what Butch just did was verify that in fact, the results that we've got locally here were transmitted to the state, and the state loaded it into the database. And you went through a match of those two different things for, for audit purposes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else for the good of the cause, folks? I'd like to thank the entire staff for a spectacular job.
Yes.
And the old the old internal auditor and me is very pleased that we have a positive audit track, the positive, uh, reports.
Good job for your first election as chair, Randy.
Well, I, I, I just, I tried to emulate the gentleman to my left, and it's hard act to follow, but, so, anyway. Uh, anything else? We have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Appreciate it, bud.